Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the December 8th version of Midwest City Council and also the last council meeting of 2020. I hope 2021 brings us a little bit better luck than we've had in 2020. I'm going ahead and call this meeting to order. I want to introduce two guests that we have with us. Cadet Butler with the JROTC program at Carl Albert. She's a senior at Carl Albert and plans to enlist in the United States Air Force when she graduates. And Cadet Crouch, he's also a senior at Carl Albert and plans to go into civil service once he graduates. And they'll be leading us in the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask Mr. Sullivan to come down and ask you to stand and he'll offer the invocation.
Gracious heavenly Father, we're humbled to be able to approach your throne this evening with our petitions and our pleas. And Father, we ask your discernment and your wisdom be upon this council tonight most of all. Father, this is, they have some difficult decisions for them tonight and I just ask that your peace and your discernment be with them. Father, we are blessed in this city, have a wonderful city to live, work, and play, raise a family. Great state and a great nation, Father, and these blessings are all a result of you. We give you glory and honor for those. Father, we have many dedicated men and women who are all over this world tonight guaranteeing the freedom to assemble like we're doing right now. And we, we ask your blessing of protection and peace be upon them as well and their families as they're away. Father, we thank you so much for your son, Jesus, this season that reminds us of his humble birth for us. We don't know how to say thank you, but just simply to say thank you, God. Thank you, Jesus. And we ask all these favors in your son's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Before we move into community-related announcements, I'd like to ask the council's indulgence and the audience indulgence for a few minutes. In 1962, this community took a leap of faith and opened a state-of-the-art hospital. Midwest City Regional or Midwest City Hospital was opened up as a beacon of care for the eastern Oklahoma County area and has been for all these years. It has gone through some rough times, but, and the hospital means a lot to me personally. I was twice employed there. My mom and I actually toured the hospital the day it opened. Today is a historic event for our city and our hospital. Today at four o'clock, it was announced that SSM St. Anthony has purchased Midwest Regional Hospital and will be the sole proprietor of that hospital going forward. The reason it's a historic event, number one, it will bring the hospital back under control of a locally owned provider, as it was when it first opened. The economic development and the impact that it's going to have on the area is going to be phenomenal. There's been two men that's been in the weeds on this for the last 18 months of trying to negotiate. Now, I want you to try to imagine, to try to negotiate a multimillion dollar contract that has 30, 40, 50 years of impact to a community. It was a difficult process and an arduous process. But our city manager, Tim Lyon, along with the CEO Clay Franklin of the hospital have led the fight and successfully negotiated that contract. And they are, you are to be proud of both of these men. Again, it's a game changer for our city. It's a game changer for those who work in the hospital. And I think you're going to see great things to come out of it. So without any further ado, Tim, congratulations.
We are indeed excited about this new relationship and this endeavor to provide the quality of healthcare in eastern Oklahoma County that our citizens deserve and the people of Heron and Choctaw and McLeod and New Wall and all the other areas that we, our ambulance service serves and that we serve as a community hospital. And we look very much forward to seeing the hospital back and to a provider that is successful in the metro area and provides a level of quality of service that we would all take our kids and our wives and our grandparents to and be treated there. So I'd like to thank Robert Coleman as well. He's our economic development director and he's been my sidekick for the last four, five, six months, maybe longer on this deal. He did an outstanding job with pieces of this term sheet that we're working on that will turn into a contract and will become public at that point. And our two attorneys that assisted as well is John Michael Williams and Linda Fleming from Florida. So anyway, thank you, Mayor.
You bet, and good job. It's a, it's a big deal. Go into community-related announcements. Mr. Lyon?
We have openings for calls with Kringle where you can have a chat with Chris Kringle himself. This holiday season, Santa will be setting up shop Friday, December 11th through Saturday, December 12th in the Midwest City's City Hall to make calls to children in the Midwest City area ages three to 10. Calls will be from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM on December 11th and 12th, if I said that right. Ages three to 10 and then 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM on the 11th and 12th. So sign up on our website. I'd like to announce our employees of the year that were selected by the Employee Activities Committee today. And since we're not having an employee Christmas party this year, felt like this is an appropriate time to recognize those two employees. So the runner-up is Cheryl Lee, who's our accounts payable clerk in the finance department, an outstanding employee that's very helpful to all of us that are trying to get the bills paid in this great city. And the winner is Barbara Kelton, who's the administrative secretary for the Neighborhood Services Department. Barbara has shown exemplary service during the period of COVID that had, when we were, had our restaurant shut down, and she was going to the store and buying groceries and cooking two days a week for all the employees in the code enforcement Neighborhood Services Department. She continues to do that all on her, on her own time. So with that, I'd like to give those two employees a round of applause. And finally, Mr. Streets is going to come up and talk about, give us a report on, an update on our storm debris removal process.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. First, I need to make a couple of announcements for services that you will see. I'll raise that just a little. I feel like I'm having to be a midget or a smurf up here. So we have to, we have to make some changes to the schedule for our trash and recycling services. As you know, Christmas is December 25th, which is Friday. Well, we aren't working that Friday. So trash and recycling for that day will actually be picked up on the preceding Wednesday, which is the 23rd. There will be a call-out that will go out Tuesday to remind residents to make sure they get their trash out that are on that Friday route. But then we get to do it all over again on January 1st because January 1st is also a Friday. So we will be picking it up the preceding Wednesday, which is 30 December. So it's important that you take note of those. We'll obviously be doing a call-out. Claudia is already pushing the information out on our website. We'll be glad to answer questions. Along with that, the compost facility will continue to provide extended hours of service. We were originally going to suspend that this Friday, but we've decided because of the use of the facility, which is where you take brush, tree limbs, et cetera, and you can buy compost, we've extended those hours through 23 December. On 23 December, we will close for the 24th, 25th through that weekend, and then we reopen that following Tuesday for normal hours, 8 to 3:00 PM, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. The exception to that is the 2nd of January, which is the day after the 1st, we will not be open to celebrate the first New Year's, New Year's Day. So if you have questions, there will be information on the website. You can always call Public Works at 739-1066 and we'll do our best to answer any questions. All right, so as you know, the week of October, the week of Halloween, we had a crazy event. We had an ice storm in Midwest City. We had a lot of vegetation on the trees, still had a lot of leaves, and it destroyed, literally went through and destroyed a lot of very old trees, new trees. It was a mess, hard to clean up. There'd been a tremendous effort to try to address this. Before I get into the dirty details, I need to thank the city staff that have worked tirelessly over the last five to six weeks and personally, I believe, deserve a round of applause for the effort they've made to help get this city cleaned up. Next, I need to thank Vaughn Sullivan because back in 2013, he had the foresight or wisdom, maybe it was the pain from the 2007 ice event, to start a relationship with an incredible contractor. That contractor is Silver Star Construction. We were very fortunate. We were one of just a few communities in the entire metro that had an emergency services contract in place when this event hit. That allowed us to start the process of getting cleaned up, get signatures after you all acted to allow the city manager, Tim Lyon, to sign those contracts. We were able to actually get started well before a lot of other communities in getting this cleanup started. And if it had not been for Vaughn's relationship with Silver Star Construction and the effort he made all those years ago to prepare that, to prepare us, the city, we would not have been able to get started on this cleanup event. So I'm grateful to Vaughn Sullivan for that effort. I'm also grateful to the city manager's office for entrusting Public Works with managing this project and hopefully we can get this thing done as quickly as possible. So what follows is a number of updates related to the ice storm cleanup. You'll see it, I handed out beforehand, one sheet that's double-sided and then a map that behind that. You'll also see up on the screen a great visual. This is our city and this shows every location with a green circle that's been picked up already. Now, I suspect some of you are like, hey, I haven't seen anybody down my street. I can't imagine that they're actually, we have trucks in this town every single day of the week to try to get this either trimming done or hauling done. What that map shows you is every place that we have picked up a pile, you'll see a lot of concentration. You can't even tell that there are circles in the areas right around the golf course, regional park, up through Poughkeepsie Grove, all the way north. The reason is because we've decided collectively as a group, along with the city manager's office, to clean up the areas for the public first. We wanted them to be able to enjoy the parks, we've had great weather, and make sure that our golf courses are open, do the things that we know, provide a high level of service, high level of quality service to our customers. So we did the best we could to get that cleaned up first. Now, as we worked through the city, we started on the eastern boundary as far as picking up the bulk waste, and you can kind of see where there's a concentration. Most everything out there on the east side of town is picked up. But the reason we started there was to make sure that we didn't interfere with the trimming because the trimmers actually started after they were done in the parks, started on the west side of the city. And part of that is to make sure that we don't have too many trucks in one place at one time to get this cleanup done. This is something we've done. It's what our contractors recommended and it's what we've done in the past. I'm not necessarily going to go through every single line because I think that's, you know, part of the reason we printed something for you. But just know that we have picked thousands of tons of material up already and still have a lot left to do. What I, what I think is important though, and we'll invite Silver Star up in a minute to answer questions, is that if you get down to the very end, you'll see that the departments that have volunteered to help with this effort, Public Works Administration, Street Department, Line Maintenance, Neighborhood Services, Sanitation, Storm Water, Water Resources Recovery Facility, the Water Plant, Community Development, Fleet Services, Customer Services, EOC, Communications and Marketing, the Police Department, and the City Manager's Office. Almost every single department for this city is represented in this effort to get the cleanup done. That doesn't happen all the time, and I'll tell you, that's a tribute to the leadership that we have, the willingness to give them the freedom to come out and volunteer to do the work. We are paying them, but I'll tell you, these hours are long. The very first week, we had a couple of employees with over 80 hours in one week. That's a lot. That's a lot of work. If you note right below that, we've had a total of 56 different employees across those departments which have helped with this effort. Before I invite Steve up here to talk and answer any questions that you might have, I want to thank a few people that are very, very important to this effort. They aren't, one of them is here tonight, Patrick Menefee, and the other is Teresa Copeland. Without Mike Stroh giving us the freedom to have Teresa and the code enforcement, they made a decision. City leadership said, you know what, we're not going to write anybody up while we're dealing with the ice storm. They diverted all that manpower and those resources to help with this cleanup effort. I will tell you that Teresa Copeland is a wonder woman. She is amazing and has done a fantastic job managing this effort day in and day out with our contractors. And Patrick Menefee has done a fantastic job helping get the scheduling, the summary. He provided most of the information that you see in your summary tonight, helping support that effort and answering questions. This is monumental, and I'll tell you, be patient with us. January 11th, we hope to have the first pass done with the whole city. Then, provided that we have some things work out for us, we expect to start the second pass of picking up the material. Lord willing, we have most everybody get all that out by January 11th. The more that's out at the curb in that first pass, the better it is for all of us. I will also let you know that January, or December 22nd will be the last day you'll see some crews in our city. They'll be taking Christmas and New Year's off to go home and be with some families. Before they come back, most of these folks are from all over, Wisconsin, Mississippi, New Orleans. We've got them from all over the United States, subcontractors working with Silver Star Construction. So they're going to take off right around the 23rd of December, and they won't be back until the 4th of January. So there'll be a little bit of a break, which is, it's very important that we give them a reprieve. At this time, I'd like to invite Steve Shaw, who is the man I referenced earlier, the man that actually started Silver Star Construction, up to the podium to answer any questions. And if you all have anything that you'd like to have explained in greater detail, please feel free to ask, and I'll give Steve a few moments to talk.
Thank you, Paul.
Sir, people are going to come and speak after you if you put your mask back on. I promise you, we can hear you.
Very good. Again, my name is Steve Shaw. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I am the founder and chairman of the board of Silver Star Construction Company. I want to preface one thing. This is the first time in storm cleanups we've ever had monitors. As employees of the city, you have the most fantastic group of employees I've ever had the privilege of working with. I promise you, bar none, it's an exceptional group. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to work in Midwest City. As Paul said, we are contracted with you all as a public works. We do asphalt overlays, milling, concrete work, whatever a city requires, we do that as our main line of business. The emergency cleanup is just a sideline of our contract. Everything going well, as he said, we anticipate being pretty much done the first pass by the 11th of January. Is there, and he went over a lot of the things. There's several thousand, 7,500 tons roughly to date going to the landfill. It's just amazing. Eighty-seven hundred limbs cut. I've got some other facts and figures, number of trees we cut down. Does anybody have any questions or comments that, as far as the cleanup's going, that I could be happy to answer for you?
Ken, you mentioned it and Mr. Streets mentioned it. Would you explain what the employee monitors are doing?
That's a good question. To be FEMA reimbursable, you have to document where the debris came from. And they're like a cradle-to-grave sort of scenario. After the, in the first cleanup we did, it's 1999, the Moore tornado, I had some coaching from some people at FEMA and some retired folks at FEMA had hired to help me, and documentation is key. In that instance, we were doing with paper tickets and a Polaroid picture. I bought every Polaroid film in four counties, I think, to do that. As the technology's evolved, there are new technologies with iPads, and the city is currently using one of those companies called Debris Tech. That every time we pick a load up and load it, we document where it came from, GIS tracked, and then it goes from the site where it was loaded to a public scope. Actually, we are using our own scales. We set up an inspection station. We weigh the truck, it goes to landfill, unloads, a city employee checks it there to make sure the truck's empty, takes a picture of it with the iPad, and sends it on to the next location. And keeping all that document, document is key because FEMA has been known to come back and audit cities. The ones that I have done have always flown through audits without any trouble. Knock on wood, and I'm sure this one would too. But we want to be sure that everything's documented down to the T to be sure we don't jeopardize any of your reimbursement from FEMA and the state.
And that's, and that's what our employees are doing.
Yeah, the employees are being monitors or say, let's call them watchdogs, to make sure that everything has been done. They take a little short class and to tell them what is legal and what's not legal as far as debris, and then they monitor everything with the iPads and it's all electronically tracked.
And we can't have a crew work, to give you an idea of the importance of the monitor. They can't put a crew out on the street to do the work without a person there to monitor the effort so that it's reimbursable. So the reason that, and part of the reason we chose to use our own personnel is because number one, they're familiar with our city, and number two, we wanted to make sure that we operated cooperatively with our contractor to make sure that we were doing, we were doing the best job we could in all of those areas that they may not necessarily be familiar with. And also at the same time, provide a liaison on the ground with customers if they have questions.
So the, a little bit of explanation on the financing, on how this works. So there's a supplement tonight of $4 million out of disaster relief, out of fund balance that we can start paying the bills. In the first 24 days, we have spent about $2 million. And when we get a federal declaration, it'll be a 75-25 split between the federal government and then the municipality. Sometimes the state picks up 12.5%. We're hoping that they do that. And if not, the whole 25% will come from city funds. By utilizing our own personnel, we were able to offset a piece of that 25% match. So I think there's an incentive for us to do that, and I think we've done that in the past and it's been very successful. And with the process that's in place and with our employees and the way the iPad and the software is established has been very successful, as Mr. Shaw talked about.
Any, any other questions that I can answer for you all?
Yes, thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it.
I, Mr. Mayor, we appreciate being here. We certainly do. And like I said, anything, anybody has any questions, just get them to Paul and he can give them to me. I'll be happy to do anything I can to answer questions.
Thanks, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you again.
Ms. Heed, do you have any community announcements? What? Okay. Does anybody else on the horse, you have any?
Two years.
All right, I'll leave it at that. Anybody else have anything for the good of the order?
Yes, yes, I would like to say that the Midwest City MLK Martin Luther King Parabolas, it would be broadcast by radio. It'd be 1220 FM, I mean, excuse me, AM. And I'll be giving more information in January because the MLK Martin Luther King Parabolas is during, it's on the 18th of January. And because of the pandemic, we want everyone to be safe, so we decided that we still want to recognize this particular day of Martin Luther King here in Midwest City, which we have established and to continue to honor that particular day as what it has done for everyone here in the United States of America. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, nothing else, we'll move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of the council or members of the audience, which discussed and then been moved and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion to approve, with the exception of number eight, that needs to be pulled and we'll put it at the end of the discussion.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Move into our discussion items. First discussion item, Mr. Lyon.
This is discussion and consideration of a quarterly update on the progress of the execution of our general obligation bonds projects. Mr. Sullivan?
Oh, Mayor and Council, the report is before you. Be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
No actions needed on the discussion item. Move into discussion item number two.
Discussion and consideration of approving amendment number six to the construction management contract with CMS Willbrook for the Delta Midwest City Public Area renovation and the amount not to exceed $1,098,769.39. This is the bid tabs for doing all the public space. We have, we have the model rooms done now and they have been approved by Marriott with the few changes that we'll make. The fitness area has been redone and the pool area has been redone. So now we'll be into the lobby and to the restaurant. So that's, that will be the cost, and that is about $25,000 under budget for that bid. So we're happy about that.
And what's the date of completion estimated?
Hmm, probably, I would, off the top of my head, I don't know. I think it's around April.
Chair to entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye. Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Item number three, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion and consideration awarding the bid and entering into a contract with Sprint Turf LLC for the installation of the multipurpose sports complex Phase One Synthetic Fields located in the 92 to 9400 block of Southeast 29th Street in Oklahoma City in the total amount of $749,600. Mr. Sullivan?
Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you again. We are very pleased with this bid. The bidder was, help me, Madam Attorney, their product was, a sample was submitted of their product and was approved by our architectural engineering firm, excuse me, and we are very pleased with the number. Darren, I believe your engineer's estimate was just a little under a million, correct? 900 and change? And we're going to be able to award this bid for, for less than 750. So we're very pleased with this bid and the product.
So sometimes I'm pretty nervous when you've got a bid that comes in 25% lower than estimates. This is a company that's got a proven track record and everything else like that.
Yes, sir. Consultants are very pleased with their work. They've, they've had quite, quite extensive experience with this contractor all around the country, so.
Any further discussion or questions, Mr. Sullivan? Chair to entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Item number four, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion and consideration awarding the bid and entering into a contract with Lippert Brothers Construction, Inc. for the construction of the multipurpose sports complex Phase One located in the 9200 to 9400 blocks of Southeast 29th in Oklahoma City in the total amount, or the total net amount of $5,082,000, which includes the base bid and the amount of $4,900,000. And alternate number one, which are the shade sales for the spectators, in the amount of $100,000. Alternate two, the playground, $146,000. Alternate three, the playground triangle shade sale, $24,000. Alternative number four, shade sales in Alternative number four, shade cells and rest, shade cells restroom, $53,000. And alternative number five, clearing and grubbing and hauling off, a deduct of $141,000. Mr. Sullivan.
Just a point of clarification, Mayor and Council, the, the deduct will simply be to haul off the debris that is cleared and grubbed by the contractor. So we'll take responsibility for disposing of it in some form or fashion. I just want to go ahead and take that deduct. It was a significant amount of money, and it does help us stay under the engineer's estimate and under budget. So we're very pleased to be able to award this contract to Lippert Brothers Construction and take all alternates, keeping us under budget and within the funding that has been appropriated by the, by the citizens. You will note that, that the recommendation is not to the low bidder. I believe you can see in the, in the documents that are provided, the rationale that proceeded this, or that helped us come to this decision. I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Any questions?
Is either one of the, the Lippert Brothers or Rick Scott, are they in the audience?
I, we do. There's Lippert Brothers. I recognize the face even under the mask. One of the Lipperts is here.
Okay, okay. Is there anybody from Rick Scott here? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say one thing. As a council member, and I have chatted with other council members, I'm always appreciative when somebody who's got something before us shows up. They don't consider it a foregone conclusion that's going to get voted on. It, it shows respect for this body, and it shows respect for the city, and it shows respect for the constituents of Midwest City. So thank you for showing up.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Again, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Discussion item number four. We just did that.
Number five.
Number five.
This is a consideration and approve a resolution, joining in and approving a joint resolution to be considered by the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority on December 8th, 2020, authorizing and approving a joint resolution with the Midwest City Chamber of Commerce Trust, Trustor of the Authority, amending paragraph two B of Article Three of the amended trust to allow items related to technology that do not have an expected useful life of greater than 20 years to be recommended for and awarded grants from the trust. Ms. Pool.
As the council is aware, this has been kind of an ongoing issue at the request of the Board of Grantors, that when they would get community grant requests, some of those would be for items that did not have a useful, or property items that did not have a useful life of more than 20 years. So there was a request made to see if there wouldn't be a way to allow them to award some of those grants to primarily educational institutions. So this resolution, the city is basically giving authority, to the authority, to join in the joint resolution with the chamber who has already approved the language to allow technology items to be considered.
I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone who's been involved with this project. Excuse me. Times have changed since the original trust was developed. We definitely, as we've seen through the applications, have a need to be able to assist a lot of times with technology in the current day. I don't know where we would be, honestly, without the technology that we have available to us with the current pandemic. And so I just want to express my thanks to everyone who's involved in this project and, and worked through to get this resolution to the point that it's at.
Thank you. And just to remind the council that the Board of Grantors has requested a joint meeting with this council, so either the first or the second January meeting, we will have the Board of Grantors here to have a discussion about the remaining funds that were left over from our, from our business-related grants and determine how we want to further spend the money. And, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Do we have an expected date for when we're planning to release those remaining funds?
Well, we'll, we'll do it after that, at that council meeting.
Okay.
But I mean, you know, the choices are going to be not do anything, and the money rolls over to the next year. The next choice is to reopen the grants and accept community grants again, or do another round of business support grants. So that, that's really the three, three only real choices there are. Everybody wants, no one wanted to operate in a vacuum, so we thought it was a good idea to have them here with you guys. So we'll have a joint meeting.
Just as an aside.
Any further discussion or questions?
Sorry, just as an aside, I had some requests from small business people asking about if there was going to be a second round of grants. So just.
We are, we are as well, and, and Mr. Coleman has prepared a document, what a second round of grants policy would look like, and we will have that prepared. And, and that'll, that'll be one of the options at that meeting for you guys to make.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Chair to entertain a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second and further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries.
And I think, Heather, I know this has been a long, long, long process. There's a lot of people involved, a lot of fingers in it, a lot of hands in it, but it took a while, but we appreciate you getting it done.
But you're correct. It was a village, because it was John Williams. The guy was still here. He had a little bit of involvement in it. Tim has been very involved in it. And again, it was really motivated by the Board of Grantors asking, is there no way that we can figure out a way to be able to provide technology or software, which is the bulk of the, as, as Councilwoman Reed's pointed out, the bulk of a lot of the grant requests now, so.
Did we take a vote? Okay. Lost track. Item number six, Mr. Lyon.
PC 2053 Public Hearing with Discussion and Consideration of Approval of an Ordinance to Rezone from R6 Single Family Attached Residential to R2F Two-Family Attached Residential, and a Resolution to Amend the Conferency Plan from LDR Low Density Residential to MDR Medium Duty Residential for the property addressed at 2200 St. Luke. This item was continued from the November meeting, council meeting. Mr. Harless.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. Yes, this is a request to rezone a single parcel to R2F Two-Family Residential for the use of existing, an existing structure as a duplex. In August of 2020, Utility Services staff became aware that the structure was being used as a duplex and notified planning staff to see if the zoning was appropriate for the duplex. The property is zone R6 Single Family Attached Residential. The zoning district does not allow for the use of duplex. Staff met with the current owner to explain that he had purchased the property in May of 2020, and the second floor of the two-story home had already been converted to an individual dwelling unit in the time of the purchase, and the structure was advertised as a duplex when he purchased it. The applicant would like to use the structure as a duplex and has made the application to rezone the property. The lot does meet the minimum size requirements for R2F as approximately a half acre. Included in this is a report from the chief building official for conversations that they had when visiting the duplex and from the fire marshal. It does need some updates for, for, to meet code and some inspections, and the applicant has said that if this passes, that they, that they would do those inspections and, and get licensed tradesmen in there to do this. A question came up through this process as how often does this happen, or how does this happen? People convert part of their house to a duplex, and they never get the skilled tradespeople in there to pull a permit or to do the work, and they just sub out their house, and, you know, a lot of college towns do this to, to have students in, in, in the back of their houses as extra income. At least this applicant came forward and is trying to, 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 to go through the process to have this to art, to, to be zoned as a duplex. So any action is at the discretion of the council, and I'll certainly ask if there are any questions.
So if we do this, because you know how I don't like variances or anything like that, if we do this, does this set us up to where somebody else comes along and says, I want to turn this to a duplex, I meet all the requirements, you zone somebody retroactively to R1 to R2? Are we setting ourselves up for any future issue like that?
You know, we've had a couple of these come through, and as long as I've been here, I think there's only been two or three over the years. You know, once every six, seven, eight years, one will come through like this, that, to do that. I don't think so. I don't think people that would, would do this would be watching necessarily and follow that.
So I realize that some smart people might be watching. Heather, you're the attorney. If we do this, what are we setting ourselves up for, or not setting ourselves up for going forward if somebody in the scenario that I put up comes around and decides, hey, there's a bunch of half, half-acre lots over here that I can pick up a house for cheap and turn it into a duplex?
Well, as you're aware, once you change the zoning, then that zoning use is open to other individuals. So there is that risk. I think then that goes to what Mr. Harless was saying was, yes, people can do that, but is it realistic that we're going to get a huge influx of people trying to do it? But you're correct. Once we change the zoning, the zoning has changed.
But it makes it easier for somebody to come to R1 to R2 later down the road. I have a problem with that.
So, I'm sorry, you said you have a problem with that, or you don't have a problem with that?
No, I do have a problem with that. And so I'm going to start by saying to the person that owns this, you bought a piece of property that you didn't know had this issue, and I feel extraordinarily bad for you. With all due respect, that doesn't mean that we put ourselves or our residents in the future, in my opinion, in a position that allows zoning that wasn't the intent of that property when they bought, when they moved next door to somebody. So I'm sorry, that's just, those are my two cents, and I'll be quiet now.
Sir, go ahead and, I assume that you're the applicant?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Could you state your name and address for the, for the record, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, Council, for being here and letting me plead my case. Sorry, I got short people problems. My name is Roshan Calra. I'm a, I'm actually a local dentist here in Midwest City. And Mr. Harless has already spoken to you about what's pretty much happened. When I bought this property, OG&E had already come in and sub-metered it. This is the first time I've ever dealt with anything like this. So I, I mean, there's no excuse for ignorance, but I was ignorant of this being something that wasn't supposed to be there, especially because it was already sub-metered for electric. I thought when OG&E got involved that we were, it was a duplex, you know? I had no reason to believe otherwise. As we found out in August, that was not the case, and as I told the planning commission last November, I'm, I'm here, I'm ready to do whatever is necessary to make it safe, habitable, whatever you guys tell us to do. I just hope that you can let me do that. As far as it turning from a, you know, single family to a duplex, I guess I can understand the hesitation there. In my case, though, it was already into a duplex, and I can't imagine many people are buying, buying a already turned duplex.
So the documents that you received when you purchased the property indicated that it was a duplex?
Well, they don't really indicate that. They just say it's a two-story house. And, and that's another thing, is it's not really, as far as my knowledge, it's not very easy to turn a one-story house into a two-story, uh, one-story house into a duplex. This was a two-story house with a, the second, the, the hallway for the stairs to going upstairs was closed off, and an exterior door was put on the backside of the house. I can't imagine many layouts allowing for something of that nature.
So I'm going to defer to either you, Billy, or you, Heather, with this question. So it's zoned as single family right now, correct? And it can be used as single family without any problem, correct?
Correct.
Thanks.
Do you have tenants in there?
No, sir.
Now, you, two questions. Are you planning to live there, or are you going to rent it out?
No, sir, I'm not planning to live there. There's already tenants in the downstairs residence, and their daughter actually has come forward and said she would like to live upstairs should everything go through. So if, if that is what happens, we have a daughter of the family that would be planning to live there.
Okay, what's the impact on you if we don't approve this?
Uh, well, I have to now turn it back to a single family and bring it all up to code, so the impact on me is, is going to be one way or another. I've had a lot of money. So it's, it's not good either way, to be honest. It's, it's better if there can be at least a little additional income.
Well, but you would, even if it was a single-family house, that second story would add, would have added more income than a one-story house, because it gives you more square footage.
It usually doesn't.
Okay.
Any further questions of the applicant?
So if we, if this is zoned, this particular house is zoned, does that mean there can be others come in that area and be zoned as well?
That's a Heather question to answer.
Yeah, Heather.
I think that was Councilmember Reed's concern to Councilwoman Allen, was once we change the zoning, then that same use, other people being able to have duplexes in there can.
But it's not just that neighborhood. It would be any house in the city that was on a half acre that fit the same definition of this one. We would have opened this up for anybody to come in and buy a half-acre lot with the one, with the house on it and say, I would now want to turn this into a duplex. Is that correct or incorrect?
I would say that's incorrect, because you can distinguish different situations. For instance, you could say to somebody coming in wanting to change a house into duplex, that the reason you granted it for this individual is because they had bought into a situation that it was already, I mean, you could distinguish, you're not necessarily bound to make the same decision again. But in, in terms of your question, once we change the zoning for this area, other houses in this area can become duplexes. People can come in and do it.
So how many houses is over there? How many, is that a?
Can we not just change the zoning for that one property?
Can we just do a waiver for that, for that property?
Yeah, this is, this is.
That's what's being asked.
So, but we, we're not opening up any for the rest of the neighborhood?
No.
Or our rest. That's where, I mean, Heather says we are.
I said, can we just do a waiver for that particular issue?
No, that's correct. It's just for this one house.
But so it doesn't, so, okay. Just to go back, so I understand more. We're not opening up a can of worms in any neighborhood or in the city if we do this this one time.
I don't think so, because I really feel you can distinguish other situations. If somebody else comes in and they're wanting to build a duplex, for instance, that's clearly different than a gentleman who bought into a property that he thought was appropriately a duplex. Or if somebody comes in and they want to change a current structure to a duplex, that's different than, again, this individual who bought into a property as a firing decor is thinking that it was a valid duplex.
So, and I'm, I'm okay if what I'm hearing is we can help this gentleman out, do, help do the right thing and not put any, and I understand that people can sue for anything. People can bring any, anything in front of the councils that they want at any time in the future. But we're not creating some kind of precedent here for others to come in and say, I want to go to R2 because you have, I have a half-acre lot, and I want to turn my one.
See, I think you could distinguish that situation from this one.
But you can certainly cite to it if you're an applicant on another piece of property, and you come back in and you say, on December 8th, 2020, this gentleman came before you, you retro-zoned his piece of property to be a duplex, now I want you to do the same for me, and the same thing happens. Heather, if they get a no, they can go to the court and say, what's the difference between him and me?
What if they can be different if, if they are, if they want to, want to build or you put in a duplex rather than a duplex that's already, was already established when he bought the property?
But I'm talking about the same, I'm talking about the same situation, Councilwoman, where you have someone who purchased a piece of property, believes it's a duplex, comes to council and says, I want this rezoned to be a duplex because I bought it thinking it was a duplex, but it's not, and you did it for this gentleman on December 8th of 2020, so you should do it for me as well. And if you don't do it, they can take the issue and say, it's disparate treatment between myself and this gentleman.
Yeah. Councilmember Eads is correct. Yeah, uh, Councilmember Eads is correct. If we have a similar situation as the applicant before us, if somebody again buys a property that has been improperly um turned into a duplex, as is the case here, then then it would be difficult to distinguish that.
See, I want to be able to help you out, but I also don't want to cause future problems. It's what Pat and I have termed the sins of our fathers. That a lot of times, and we're gonna make mistakes. Our forefathers on this council may have mistakes. Some, almost every mistake was made with well-meaning, causes us problems today. We want to try and limit as many problems for the next council, next city manager, the next Billy, the next Heather as we can. And I I don't think this eliminates a problem. I think it creates one.
I also had to send out uh mail to like all the people within a certain radius. So if someone in the future did want to do that and any of the neighbors opposed it, they would receive that mail. And and they would be able to stop it that way, I think.
Well, we're so her case is if they take us to court. That's what she's talking about. Anybody can take you to court. The more, Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, the more that we give a variance or do something outside of what we normally do, the courts can seize on that and say, you've done it for one. The term you used was disparate treatment, I think if I pronounced that correct. That's kind of what we create when we do a one-off because it can become not a one-off later down the road. And that's my that's my that's my concern.
So is a what what way can we do this without we creating a big issue? Is there no way or?
Well, um, Councilmember Reed and Councilmember Eads are correct that if you grant the waiver here, you run the risk of other individuals coming forward and asking for the same type of waivers. I feel that there's probably very few, as Mr. Harless pointed out, very few situations like this where we have two-story houses that have been turned into duplexes that we're not aware of until they're sold. So I I don't know that there's gonna be that many similar situations to this. You do run a risk of other people coming in, even if they're wanting to build or if they're wanting to remodel, arguing that this sets a precedent, but I really feel you can distinguish it from the fact that this gentleman purchased property that had been previously improperly turned into a duplex and he bought into it, unaware of that situation. I think you could distinguish it, but it is totally up to the council whether you want to run that risk of having to distinguish this situation from others if other individuals come up and make that request.
Same kind of deal with the fence that's illegally put up, correct? Are we in the same, are we gonna make that guy take a fence down that was illegally improperly approved and put up? Do we want to make that person take his fence down and then we cause a bigger storm, correct?
Because they're they're.
Because they bought that property thinking the fence is supposed to be.
With that use already going on. That's correct.
Except I think that the documentation on the sale should have addressed how the property was, what its condition was. And if it was sold as a residence, a single-family residence versus being listed for anything else, that put this gentleman on notice of what he was buying, regardless of how it appeared. So it's, you know, you get a fence, you assume it was put installed properly. You see what you see, but it doesn't usually clarify unless you go out and do the actual measurements that, yes, it's on point or no, it's off and it's over the property line.
So if it was sold as a duplex and they gave it title insurance as a duplex, but it wasn't a duplex legally, does title insurance, does it claim a title insurance?
What was the legal description on this property? Was it a single-family residence?
Yes, it's it's owned a single-family.
So there was no indication from our end that it had been turned into a duplex. So whoever had it before did all that under the wire, without permits, without zoning, nothing.
Yes, sir.
And now he's holding the ball with it.
But at least I'm trying to rectify it.
But just to clarify, so if you keep it as a single-family residence, you're saying you still have to bring it up to code at this point because the modifications that were made in it weren't made with permits? Is that where we're going with this ultimately?
Going back to my, uh, going back to my original question, um, I'm trying to envision this. And the back stair case to this two-story residence was enclosed to for privacy, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that turned it into a duplex. So one family or whoever lived upstairs wouldn't bother the other ones and vice versa. Again, what would be the issue with you just keeping it as a single family, legal description is zoning? And now you've got two stories and the daughter wants to move upstairs puts the harm.
I was told I am not allowed to do that.
So you've got to go back and do from what I read. Regardless of what happens here today, you're gonna have to go get permits and you're gonna have to redo the house.
Yes, sir.
So here's the here's the where I'm gonna come down on this one for me. You made an investment. This isn't your primary residence. You didn't buy it to live in it. You bought it to make money off of it. I would probably maybe have a little bit different view if you'd bought this as your home and you were gonna rent the upstairs and you're gonna live it downstairs. I don't know for sure. But when you buy a property for an investment, you take all the risks that come along with it. And there are many. I I have investment properties and some I've done well on and some I'm like, God, what the hell was I thinking? But those are risks we take when we buy an investment property. I don't think as an investment property, this is a good deal to give a variance on. Because we all take major risk when we buy something to invest in. And you've got to spend probably the same amount of money regardless of if it's a duplex or a single-family home to get it permitted and bring it back correctly. And so it's not gonna be on you any more expensive or any more of a hardship on you to get a permit for a duplex or keep it as a single family. The only hardship is you're gonna make less rent in your mind. I don't think it's our job. Take this, and I mean this nice because I've invested in properties and I've done well and I've done poorly. We all, and you've done the same thing probably, right? Our job isn't to bail an investor out of a bad investment.
I understand. Um, the one the one thing that I didn't realize that could happen before this is O G and E submetered the two dwellings. And and if that hadn't happened, I would have known for sure that this was done incorrectly. But given that there were two separate meters, two separate bills, and when I have to call O G and E, I have to turn one on versus turn the other on.
I could have three meters put in my personal residence. If I want to have a shop in my backyard, I can throw a meter there. If I want to have a meter put into my garage for something else. I mean, O G and E will put a meter anywhere you want to because they're gonna make money off of it.
Right, I understand.
Do you have two separate mailing addresses at that house?
Uh, not yet, no.
Then it's not a duplex.
On the brighter side, there's an article in the Wall Street Journal last week that forty-five percent of college graduates are still living with their parents. You could market it that, you know, uh, make the upstairs for the live-in kid and the downstairs for the parents.
And I'm the one who's a smart ass, but now we've got Matt taking my spot.
Well, if if it's changed back into a single family, am I allowed to have someone upstairs?
It's an upstairs, it it's an upstairs.
Time out. As long as you get the permits.
Right.
Either way, you've got to get the permits and bring it up to code.
Yes.
Once it's up to code, you can run it up to a family and somebody can live upstairs. Daughter, kids, grandparents, whatever else, it'll be treated like a single-family residence. So yes, they could live upstairs, but it would be a single-family home, one tenant. And you could do that, yes.
Just a thought. Um.
Well, you know.
Is there any more questions or comments?
Well, it's just like a person can buy a house and they can rent a room out. So it's it's the same as you can rent the top out. I mean, what's that at the top? Can I understand? Is it like a stove, a hole and everything and such?
Yes, ma'am.
So that would have to be taken. All that would have to be taken out, the stove and this and refrigerator and all this or what? No?
A lot of places have two kitchens.
Yeah, of course, yes.
Yeah, um, so there's what they're not gonna do is allow them to have the extra water meter. They'll have to come in and take the doorway out for the pass fire inspections and those types of things. It'll have to be as one unit.
Basically, he's gonna have to have the stairs come back down to the house and everything's gonna have one meter, one water meter, everything else like that.
Right.
And fix whatever was not done with the permit correctly.
And so.
I'm gonna make a motion to deny this request.
We've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Let everybody take a vote on it.
I'm sorry?
Can everyone vote on it individually?
Yeah.
The city clerk called, roll call vote.
Ward one. Two. Three. Four.
Yes.
Five.
On a denial?
Yes.
Um, I can't even vote on it. I don't know which way to go.
You can abstain.
You can abstain.
I don't know how to go with this. I I can't even vote on it. I'm sorry.
Okay, we have an abstention?
Okay, okay. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I'm sorry you're in this situation. But uh, you're a smart guy. You can figure it out.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, item number seven.
PC two thousand fifty-eight, public hearing with discussion and consideration of in ordnance to redistrict from S P U D, simplified plan unit development governed by one-dash-one light industrial district to amended S P U D for the property described as a part of the southeast quarter of section twenty-nine, township twelve north, range two west, located at eleven oh one North Sooner Road. Mr. Harless.
Thanks, Mr. Lyon. This property, uh, this property was annexed into the city, uh, Midwest City in the summer of two thousand eighteen. The property was designated to be zoned I one light industrial to accommodate the existing uses of auto automotive equipment, heavy gasoline sales and off-premise avers- off-premise advertising. In March of two thousand nineteen, the property was rezoned to a uh, uh, Spud governed by I one, uh, allowing all I one uses as well as the additional use of alcohol beverage retail sales. The applicant contacted staff in September about remodeling a portion of the existing structure for the use of medical marijuana dispensary. Uh, the use of the dispensary is not permitted in I one light industrial district. So the applicant is requesting a special development regulation to amend this bud to allow the dispensary um convenience sales and personal services, along with the already approved I one uses and the use of alcoholic beverage retail sales. Uh, no new structures are proposed with this application. Action is at the discretion of the council and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I can't see anything different from this one than the other one. Uh, with that being said, you have any questions? Is the applicant in the audience? Chair to entertain a motion.
Did the applicant is or is one of the audience?
Not.
So I don't see him.
So. This is surrounded by what?
Oklahoma City unincorporated band. That has nothing on any side.
And and a little bit of indu- industrial.
But we incorporated this particular track that's the area of request, correct?
Yes.
And everything else around it is gray. It's not just because it's Dell City. It's all just unincorporated space?
North of Tenth Street is unincorporated.
Okay.
Up to that triangle area where the Reddler track is and that becomes Oklahoma City. If you're looking at that map, it is on page one thirty-seven.
I think that's what I'm on. Yes, that's what I'm on. That's what I was looking at. And this is going to include a grow facility specifically?
It's dispensary.
Just a dispensary. I'm sorry. I thought I heard otherwise and I was like, I don't remember reading that. Okay, thank you.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we take no action on this. For the simple fact that we, the applicant is not here and one of the questions that Mayor always asks is, has this been presented to you and have you read this? You know, so we don't know that he has a problem with this or not because he didn't show up. And it, I would just prefer to do what you guys want, vote however you want, but I would prefer to not do anything.
Lots of comments. We can take no action and bring it back to the next meeting.
Or we can just table it, whichever. But I think, so it does irk me as a deliberative body when our staff puts a whole bunch of time and effort into anything. And this is the third time they've touched this piece of property from bringing it into the city and then then going to to this bud and then now doing this. And one of the reasons I think one of the general deliberate brothers.
Is to me, it's really important that people show up when they have something in front of the council. You don't assume that it's gonna be voted a certain way. You don't take for granted all the work the staff has done. And we can't ask him if he got a copy of the report and if he's okay with everything.
Well, conversely, he didn't show up.
I mean, we, I could very, I I was very tempted to vote no because he didn't show up, but I think that it's best to table this to give him the opportunity next time. And I also think it sends a message to other people out there. If I've got something in front of the council for the city of Midwest City, it's probably best if I show up.
Well, if we table it, it'll be on the next council meeting as is. We take no action, then there's no set deadline.
I say we table it because he didn't show up. It has to come back as is.
Is one easier for our staff than the other?
I'm sorry?
Is one approach either taking no action or tabling it, is one easier for our staff?
Well, table means they can't touch it. They don't have to do a single thing on it. If we take no action, he wants to.
That's what I'm interested in. I mean, I understand your rationale, Councilman, but.
Can be amended.
Right.
If we table it, then it has to come back in the same form.
If we table it, staff doesn't have to touch it again.
If if we're going to do anything, we ought to table it.
That's what I wanted to know.
We just take a vote to table it, correct or not?
No.
No.
So that item is tabled.
And so if he don't come back next time.
We will get a chance to vote on it and I will make a request to vote no, but everybody gets to vote how they want.
Item number eight.
PC two thousand fifty-nine, public hearing with discussion, consideration and ordinance to redistrict from C three community commercial to S P U D simplified plan unit development governed by C three community commercial, subject to staff comments for the properties described as lots one and two, a block A of the Mary Dale Acres Edition, addressed as eleven oh one and eleven oh seven North Post Road. Billy?
So the applicant is revising um their uh application. So I guess we don't want to table this, so we want to um to take no action?
Take no action, okay.
Item number nine.
PC two thousand sixty, public hearing with discussion and consideration of in ordnance to redistrict from S uh from P U D planned unit development governed by I two moderate industrial district to amended P U D planned unit development governed by I two moderate industrial district, subject to staff comments for the properties described as lots one, four, eight, nine, ten and eleven of the Global Business Center Edition. The lots are addressed as twenty-seven hundred, twenty-seven ten, twenty-eight hundred, twenty-eight thirty, twenty-eight hundred and twenty-eight forty-one.
Before before Billy starts on this, uh, if, and I don't have a problem with with us tabling the deal on Sooner Road. But if we're gonna do it on Sooner, before Billy goes through his presentation on this, I think we need to be consistent with the with the deal. If we're gonna do it for one, we need to do it for all. And before Billy reads all what he needs to tell us, is the property owner for twenty sixty in, are they here?
Property owner? They're here.
Yeah. That's twenty, that's twenty sixty. That's the one on the Global Parkway, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just didn't want to. He didn't want to make Billy read fourteen paragraphs.
Thank you.
Okay, Billy, I just trying to save you some time.
Yes, uh, thank you, Councilman. Um, we'll go ahead, Mr. Lyon?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, in two thousand three, the property was rezoned from I two uh, modern industrial and C four general commercial to P U D governed by the I two moderate industrial district. The P U D was requested to allow private street providing access to the building sites. Several I two uses were excluded from the original P U D and remain excluded with this application. The owner of the six properties noted above and is the subject is requesting to amend the P U D to allow the use of commercial marijuana growth and marijuana processing. These uses were not, these uses are now allowed in the I two district, but were not use unit classifications when the original P U D was approved in two thousand. but were not use unit classifications when the original PUD was approved in 2003. Uses are often specifically included and are excluded with SPUD and PUD applications. Any SPUDs and PUDs, uh, approved prior to the adoption of the ordinance creating the marijuana grow and processing uses must be amended if the owner wants to allow for these uses. The original PUD was intended for industrial use, and the properties abutting the area requests to the east are zoned for industrial uses. Action is at the discretion of the council. And the reason we bring this up about the excluded uses and everything like that, and they're not just given by right, when we adopted the marijuana ordinance, um, way back when, um, it was noted that since PUDs and SPUDs are kinda specialized districts, that if somebody wanted to do something in that district with marijuana, that they'd have to come back through this body in order to do that, and so that's why this application is made.
Would, when this application was made, did, did you have to make notice to the property, the other property owners?
Yes.
Were there any protests?
Did we get any? No.
Okay.
No, sir. Glad to answer any other questions.
You guys are aware. There's a RV park right there, a mobile home park right there, it looks like. They sent the notices out to everybody within 300 feet, and nobody had any complaints, right?
No, we have no complaints.
Donald B. Navard, 2825 Northwest Grand Boulevard, Oklahoma City. I'm here with Mr. Gar and Mr. Ephraim, we are the owners and developers of Global Industrial Park. So I'm here to answer any questions. Uh, we build and develop industrial warehousing and industrial ba, uh, buildings. Uh, the request doesn't include all the land in the park because some of that's been sold to other owner-users, and they're not objected, they're, they're very comfortable with what we're doing here. But when we developed properties, we developed them for lease. And we've had, uh, a lot of requests for mari, marijuana-related, uh, operations, and of course, we couldn't do that. Right now, we're full, we're, you know, we're very lucky, we, uh, run a good operation, a very clean one. If you haven't been out there, you gotta go out and see it, it's very nice, we're gonna start another building. But we wanna be able to lease to, you know, respectable and legitimate, uh, operations, uh, using marijuana. You passed the reg, the ordinance allowing for it, so we're asking it to be amended for our use.
So there's no intent right now to put in a grow house or anything? You've got, uh, full attended, uh, you, you're full?
We actually turned down two, sir.
But you're just anticipating when you get an opening?
Yes, sir. We'd have to build a new building, but, uh, we've had two requests, uh, but the spaces, the space is full.
So when you get an opening, I've, I've got zero problem with grow operations or dispensaries, but I do have always concerns about the neighbors, because I know, um, pot smells bad. When it grows, you can smell the flour and everything else like that. You're gonna have filters in the buildings and everything else to keep the odor away from the neighbors, right?
Well, that's gonna be up to the tenant, and we require that in our leases.
Okay, so your leases are specific.
Do that type of thing, but environmental protection, any, any kind of contamination of the property has to be, uh, prohibited under our lease, and we have a pretty strong.
So your leases will be specific about the fact that they have the proper filtering and everything else?
Very.
Okay.
I have concerns about this project. Again, we're looking at the idea of putting this within an area that is a busy area, there's some degree of residential near it. Um, it's the same issue that I've brought up before, that, again, if you're putting something in that has essentially an agrarian characteristic to it, in my opinion, it should be outside the city limits, not inside the city limits. We have previously had lengthy discussions about this particular area at 29th and Douglas, and what specific purposes the city would like to see that area take on. We just earlier approved to spend a lot of money, catty corner across the street from this, to put in a multipurpose sports complex, and I just do not believe that this is the best use for our development as a city for this particular space. So for that reason, I, I have an issue. Anybody wanna address that?
Well, it's, it's really, you're correct in one aspect that it's catty corner, but it's about probably a third or a quarter of a mile away from the sports facility. And if the way I read the map, uh, you're in the backside of that, you're not, it's not the front, street-facing area, it's, it's the.
No, the backside. Well, I'm not sure what the backside is, but Global Parkway runs, uh, away from 29th Street.
Correct.
It runs from south to north away from 29th Street.
Correct, it doesn't, it doesn't front Douglas Boulevard either.
No, no.
No, it doesn't, the, uh.
That's, that's the point I was making, it's, it's the, there's, it's basically two areas, like the cookie store and the, in the, that, then you're behind that, back there by.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I would agree with Ms. Eads if we were straight across the street from the, uh, the sports facility, but we're, you know.
A mile.
Well, not, not quite a mile, it's probably, you, you, it's, it's not gonna be in the same, you can't see it.
And, and I do agree with that point, I just, again, we had very heated discussions over this entire area historically in this council. Other projects that came up, um, like an auto-pollution business and it being situated off of 29th and Douglas, again, that was gonna be immediate proximate to the street, so I appreciate the distinction, Councilman Byrne is drawing, but it's still, and, and this is my issue, you know, maybe it's because I'm a farm girl, but if it's agrarian, it belongs outside city limits. Nurseries, you don't see them in the heart of a municipal area. 29th and Douglas is a very busy intersection area, and there's a lot of uses that could come to play for that property, so, just my two cents.
Ms. Poole, I've got a question for you, hadn't there been, correct me if I'm wrong, hadn't there been litigation since, uh, since the passage of the Medical Marijuana Act that, uh, cities or municipalities that tried to do, uh, use zoning to prevent the operation or growing or anything related to the marijuana industry is prohibited? Or am I incorrect?
Depends on which jurisdiction you're in. The cases, the cases have broken both ways, but yes, uh, up around Tulsa, Broken Arrow, they, they really got hammered by District Court and going at the appellate level for attempting to, um, uh, zone out those types of businesses. Some of that, um, people feel have been addressed by the unity legislation that has expanded controls on that industry, where, which were not in place when some of those other lawsuits came. So cities do have a little bit more ability to regulate after that unity bill was passed by the state legislature.
So since there's, since there's no, there's no current grow operation there, that he's doing this in a proactive manner to try to, try to get business into his park, by not passing this, we're not interfering with a current grow or preventing anything from being built. We're just not going to allow that for right now. Does that make sense, or no?
Ask me that again, so, so you're, if I understand, um, the applicant correctly, they don't have a specific tenant in mind for the zoning right now.
That is correct.
It's a, it's a, um, uh, it's a, they're coming forward because they've had.
They've had a couple of requests, but they don't have a signed lease agreement to build a building for growing marijuana.
We don't at this time, no.
Right.
But I, but since your ordinance allows it in I-2 moderate, I would find it very difficult not to prove this, and I understand your sit, uh, Ward one, I understand your point, but that's not what your ordinance says right now. Your ordinance does not exclude certain areas. It says I-2 moderate, and when we built the park, a lot of years ago, when there were a lot, when there wasn't a lot of demand, it was I-2 moderate, and we've complied with that for twelve, up to 10 years.
But if the council chooses not to rezone something, that's not freezing somebody out or what Broken Arrow do that you were talking about. We have other areas available that are zoned for grow operations within the city, right?
That's, that's correct, and.
So, I'm pretty much on your side on this one. However, I don't agree with what you just said, which is, our ordinance is saying so-and-so. We don't have to rezone any property any way we want it, if somebody wants us to. We can keep this as the I-2, or whatever it is at this point, and we're not freezing anybody out. It's not like we got rid of all of the zoning that allowed grow operations within the city. We've got spots where we have grow operations within the city right now.
Councilman, are you saying then if you disapprove this, you wouldn't be freezing anybody out?
No, because we have spots, but it's not like we got rid of all of our spots available in, in the city of Midwest city, and we said, we're gonna get rid of this type of zoning, so we, so nobody gets to come in here. What I'm saying is, we don't have to move a property from one zoning R1 to R2 or anything else. I mean, you just saw us say to a gentleman that we weren't gonna go from R1 to R2 for a duplex. We don't have to, you kinda said that we had to.
Well, you've already, you've already said that the marijuana industry can work and is permitted.
We've got areas that are zoned, but you're asking.
And we are I-2 moderate already.
I understand, but you're asking us to rezone. We don't have to do that, and the question that he had was, Broken Arrow has gotten their teeth kicked in a couple of times because they have tried to freeze this industry out. We have not in any way, shape, or form. We've got areas that are open for zoning right now that medical marijuana, growing dispensaries and, uh, processing operations are in and are thriving. We have not done anything to push any medical marijuana business out. You telling us that we have to rezone this, you went the wrong way with me, that just really goes all over me. And I was a big proponent of this until you told us how we should, how we had to vote.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure I just, I don't agree with you 100%.
Plenty of people do.
When you, when you authorize a particular use within an area that's already zoned, and all you're saying now is, you have to come back and get it approved within the I-2 because it wasn't approved earlier in the I-2, then I think you're restricting us.
I'm just telling you, when you come and ask somebody to do something, you shouldn't tell us that we have to do it.
Okay.
You made a huge mistake.
Obviously, we'll, we'll do whatever you guys say, but also understand that, as a lawyer, I understand and work the law also, and we would have concerns about signaling us out in an already approved I-2.
Nobody signaling you out, you're specifically asking us to change our ordinances, which we don't have to do. You're specifically saying, his question was, there are plenty of litigation where cities have tried to freeze it out. You can throw a rock and hit a dispensary in this town. You can throw a rock and hit a grow operation, you can throw a, I don't think that you could effectively argue that we're freezing this industry out.
I think you are.
Oh, you could try to argue, you're an attorney, you're gonna argue and probably tell the judge what to do. You're telling me what to do?
Absolutely, you're hurting, you're hurting, you're hurting our business after allowing us to develop an I-2.
Make a motion to deny this.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second, and discussion's closed. I have a motion to deny this request. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number 10.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Could we take a short five-minute break, please?
You bet we can.
I apologize, but.
We stand recessed for five minutes. Restance is over. So, and recess is over.
You remember the second aid at the very bottom?
We're all on it.
We're on the game. We're doing our A-game.
That's why I was wearing the light one. I keep breaking, I keep breaking. We lost favors. We have a peepee here. No, he's not.
Are you sure?
Yep. I'd see his, I'd see his blonde hair.
That's good.
Yeah, so I'll know Friday we're going to do this.
Good. That's, that's a good thing. So, it's easily fixed. Easily fixed. That's, that's awesome. Yeah, that's awesome.
But I'm fine with that. Because we haven't frozen anybody out in a single day.
Oh. That's a blessing.
How scared.
We know that, and the judge will know that, and he'll warn us.
He's in my.
Y'all get the preview window.
Yay, he's back.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Favors, for your turn. Mr. Lyon, item number nine?
10.
10, whoa.
PC 2061, discussion, consideration approval of the status one preliminary plat for the property described as part of the Southwest Quarter, Section 12. Township 11 North, Range 2 West, addressed as 2500 South Douglas Boulevard. Mr. Harless.
Thanks again, Mr. Lyon. This preliminary plat is being requested in order to divide the existing 10-acre tract into three parcels for development. The frontage along South Douglas Boulevard is owned C3 Community Commercial, and the rear or the eastern portion of the lot is owned RHD High Density Residential. All required public improvements, including cul-de-sac road, water, sanitary extensions, and a trail are requirements of the preliminary plat and must be installed prior to the application of the final plat. The applicant has requested a waiver regarding the tree canopy management plan. However, all trees east of the creek abutting the original orchard addition are proposed to remain through the blading process. The Parkland Review Committee recommended approval of private parkland to be owned and maintained by the HOA. Actually, it's the discretion of the council. And so what we have here is the dividing of the lots, the, the 10-acre tract into three, three tracks, as you all will remember maybe from the zoning process. But as they do this, you know, the, we have a tree canopy management plan that, that was approved or that needs to be approved, and they would like to remove a lot of the trees in the, the, would be the western portion of this for their development. There's a lot of, been a lot of damage to the trees, and they're requesting that these be removed because it's going to be so difficult to do the grading and drainage for that area.
Mr. Burns, haven't you been?
I've been out there a lot, and the, this is, we've seen this. This is the apartment that are going in on Douglas Boulevard, just north of 29th Street on the east side. The issue with this particular piece of property, and I'd really never thought it would be developed, but these people are willing to take the risk, is it's not level. It's got mounds of dirt. It's, it, it is going to be a challenge to build in there with, without giving them the waiver on the trees. Now, they understand, and we've met, the mayor and I have met with the neighborhood over there as people from community development, and what they've promised to do, particularly on the northeast side of this property, is to save as many trees as possible to make a buffer between their complex and the houses in the orchard. And that was the only complaint from the people in the orchard, is they wanted those trees. And there's some pretty big trees in there, and it's a natural buffer. It needs to stay. The problem is that the land is not even close to being level. And there's trees in, correct me if I'm wrong, Billy, there are trees in there that need to come down in order to make this work. And normally, they would have to go in and put all the infrastructure in first and then be able to take the trees down, correct?
Correct.
They're asking to not have to do that first because it's going to be, it's going to put a considerable cost on it. And there's a lot of trees in there that are scrub oaks. They're, they're not the kind of trees you would want to save. And it's to their advantage to save as many trees. And it's to the advantage of the city to, I think, to work with them because we've spent a lot of money on correcting the drainage problems over there at the Reed Baseball Field. And that drainage, if we don't monitor what they're doing there, it could affect the work that we've already done, which is cleaned up a problem that the people in the orchard were getting flooded out. So, that being said, I've, I've walked it, the engineer's here, and I think he's the bulldozer guy, correct? And they can explain it better. He's going to do the dirt work, but it, they're not, it, it, it would benefit us, it would benefit them if we did this, with the understanding that the trees, there is a group of trees that have got to stay, and they're not going to just go in and flatten it out and take all the trees out.
Are there any questions or any questions at the engineering firm? Hearing none, I'll adjourn to the motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Before we get into item number 11, there's a couple of things I'd like to say. This is a rezoning request. We've visited this before. We have heard all the complaints as counsel through three public hearings and a very tenuous council meeting. The applicant has mitigated all the complaints that were brought forth in those three meetings and council meeting. There's nothing new on the table. The parking has been addressed. The fire lanes have been addressed, the height have been addressed. The retail has been addressed. Even the dumpster has been addressed, just recently. So, with that being said, we do have two people that have signed up to talk on this. Ron Mason, you want to address the council, please?
We need to call the item first.
I'm sorry.
PC 2057, public hearing with discussion and consideration in ordinance to redistrict from our six single-family detached residential to PUD planned unit development governed by RHD High Density Residential and a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from LDR Low Density Residential and PSP Public Semi-Public to HDR High Density Residential for the property described as lots nine through 13, 17 and 18, block five of the Pine Edition.
Before Mr. Mason starts, I have something I want to add.
Yes, ma'am.
So, no disrespect intended to you, Mr. Mayor, but not everything has been addressed that was complained of historically. Mr. Favors is now on the council, and he was not on the council when this apartment complex, the previous version with a different design essentially came before us. So, this is new information for his sake. And again, there are issues in that area. Unlike the project we just discussed, where Councilman Byrne addressed, that significant expenditure has been made by the city to address the drainage problem. We have a drainage problem in the immediate area of this project that the city has not addressed. And the previous apartment complex proposed by the applicant started, from memory, last summer. And we've had since last summer to take any kind of action to address drainage issues, but we haven't done anything with it. And so, that still remains as a problem, and that's been one of the, of my constituents' complaints. There's also, in addition to the people that are speaking here tonight, a number of people who emailed in their statements because of COVID issues, which were attached to the record, and I'm sure you've had the opportunity to read. But just in terms of framing the issues, there are things that are of concern to my constituents and to me that aren't resolved by where we are currently. You mentioned the fire lane has been addressed. It was changed, but it's still less than what the specified space that is normally required is. The parking is just barely over the numbers, and depending on how many occupants you have per unit of the 34 units, I believe it is, depends on whether there will still be an effect on the neighborhood based upon parking at the complex or not parking at the complex. But I will agree with you, Mr. Mayor, it does meet what is proposed as the requirement for parking. So, that being said, I defer to the constituents to speak their issues about the project.
Thank you, Ms. Eve. Ron? Can you state your name and address when you get here? And Ron? Being with just what I said, please keep that in mind.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and address, and talk about what we need to talk about, would you please?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Ronald Mason, 224 East Kitty Hawk Drive. For the benefit of the new council member, you know, we discussed many things, which the mayor did address. The one thing that he didn't talk about was that, to me, is still a concern, and it's not going to be, hasn't been mitigated in any way, is traffic. Traffic's an issue in that area already, probably more so than in some of the other districts because we still do have Midwest Elementary, that one end of the street, which there's a lot of traffic. It goes back and forth twice a day during the school year. You know, there was a lot of discussion about football games, the traffic there. Yeah, that's only five or six a year, but there's track meets. There's many other events that go on at the football field that, that creates a traffic hazard several times throughout the year. We have the big First Baptist Church there. Traffic two days a week, that we have issues already in that area. That has not been addressed. The discussion earlier on item number six, I just thought it was kind of ironic that, you know, we go into that discussion over a gentleman that, yeah, the building was there previous, and he should have looked, and that was his mistake for not looking and checking it out a little closer than he did before he purchased it. But the discussion that was involved in that over just changing it from one to two residents in that little area, and we're talking about a 34-unit, if I remember right, is what it's going to be, 34-unit apartment complex. I just don't think that, as Ms. Eve said, there's been any addressment. I know for your benefit, the big discussion, one big discussion item was the fact that nobody has invested in the original model in years, or there's been very little investment. We discussed that because of the zoning issues, which I haven't heard anything that's been happened to try to remedy any of the zoning issues
We've been.
to this point.
Me and Mr. Harless have been in constant discussion on that, and that's some forthcoming.
But, but that, as we discussed earlier, is a big issue, major issue, into why people are not investing in that original mile. It's not just the people that live there, it's the city. I think the city has neglected the original mile. And I understand to a point, you're expanding, there's been big new build areas over there. But if you drive through the original mile and you take away everything else that was discussed earlier, and if you looked and if the city did the infrastructure improvements that needs to be done, that original mile would look a whole lot better than it does today, just in that alone. New streets with curbing, sidewalks, you know, which all the new areas that have been built, you know, and developed in recent years. That alone would make it look a lot better. The recent ice storm brings up another deal that we discussed earlier in, in the meetings, was all the trees in the fence lines that people have been, you know, just neglecting and let grow up. We probably wouldn't have had near the power outages if that had been addressed in years. So, you know, the city has some ownership in the reason people haven't developed in that area. Big thing is the zoning. If you would do that, I think you would start to see some. A big part of it too, which all the other districts in this area, the new housing developments, 20, 30, 40 years from now, there's probably going to be a lot of rental properties in those areas too, and you're going to start addressing and looking at the same issues. And to try to blame it just on the citizens, which was one of the things that was said was, you know, citizens, people, they're not, you know, but the city has neglected it, and they haven't developed or, or put money into that area. I still, with the drainage issues, I don't see adding 34 apartment comp, you know, unit, 34-unit apartment complex is going to help that situation at all. Sewer issues, those, those are still there. They have not been addressed.
Let me, there, there's a couple of things I want to point out, and which we, we lost in the original discussion. This is a zoning request.
Exactly.
This is not a PUD, it hadn't been submitted yet. There's conceptual drawings out there. The drainage will be addressed.
But it should be done before this is put into place. How much more difficult is that going to be to, to do that after the fact?
Ron, this is just a zoning request. We're not approving the building.
I understand, but if you approve this zoning request, what do we, the building is going to probably happen because the, the planning commission has already approved it.
That's just one step in the process. He's going to have to bring forward all of his plans, and the drainage is going to have to be addressed. And with the council that's sitting on this horse sheet right now, unless that's addressed, it won't get approved.
Mayor, I'm not sure you realize it, but we, we had conversations about the drainage
Sure, we have.
last week, correct?
Yes, Patrick, do you want to come up and address that? You submitted a report.
Now, Mayor, council, hot. Not aware of any specific incidents in this particular area as far as flooding or drainage issues. We did some research through our public works records to look for any specific requests for service in that area. None have been made. I've spoken with our street and drainage supervisor to ask about the history of the area, if there was anything at issue at this property, and they were not aware of anything, so.
I've made those requests, even in these meetings, when we did the last apartment complex that was proposed. There's a drainage accumulation that happens right by the First Baptist Church at Rick and Barker and Kitty Hawk. That's where it all goes. All of those, and we talked about this, Mr. Sullivan was involved in that conversation about where the drainage goes. Those drainage flumes routinely get clogged also, and that further exacerbates the drainage issue in that area. So, again, to say that there's been no reports of any drainage problems in this issue, I've had that conversation. I've had it in this environment, I've had it in the community meetings with that. It's been addressed with city leadership. So, I don't understand that.
But am I correct in saying, Patrick, that when the final plat comes forward, that you and Mr. Bundy are going to be looking at that and making sure that we're not going to have any drainage issue as a result of this complex?
Yes, as part of any design, there can be no net increase of water coming off the site. So, once the, the detailed drawings are generated, that's, you know, one of the priorities that the developer has to meet.
Patrick, you, I mean, in concurrence with councilperson Eads, I mean, you have multiple occasions where there has been limbs in those grates, and the street department's had to clean them out on multiple occasions.
Yes, sir. That, that's an issue with any big rain event. We have to go clean out our infrastructure. It does cause, can cause damming, and it can cause issues, but again, as far as the record of multiple or any complaints with that specific property, we have nothing on record.
Well, you mean, you're looking at that particular track where the proposal is done, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Because right now, it's a field with grass. So, I'm sure nobody's making a complaint about that specific track. It's what's going to happen with regard to the drainage as a result of the change of characteristic of that, and how that's going to exacerbate the already existing drainage problem that we have. And whether those drain grates are cleaned out or not, there's still a pooling that occurs. It's been happening as long as I have lived there. It's the same effect that we have, whoops, right up at 15th Street by Pet Vet. After they did the modification, there's constantly a pooling that happens there. I've reported that. That hasn't been remediated yet either. I mean, so, I, I understand what you're saying as far as if there's no record of a report for that track because it's vacant, so.
Mr. Street, you have a, something to add to this?
Just wanted to make an observation. So, we did do a search. We've had City Works, which is, which tracks our work orders and service requests since 2012 and 13. We did a search for any and all drainage complaints or service requests associated with drainage in that area, not just specifically, but literally in, in three to four blocks around the area. The only thing that we come up with are maintenance-related issues. And those maintenance-related issues, talking about sticks and things that blind the grates, are no different than anywhere else in town. We have similar issues all over town, but it's not necessarily a drainage problem. We have similar issues all over town, but it's not necessarily a drainage problem. It's a function of the fact that you have debris that leaves somebody's yard and washes onto a grate and blocks it and creates a flooding or pooling. So, I would be careful about how we characterize personally, you know, when we talk about drainage complaints or drainage issues, we need to be very careful or cautious about how we approach those, that's my recommendation as a staff person. When we talk about those, we do have those areas in town, and we do have a list of projects associated with those improvements that are going to be needed to remediate or address those issues. But those are definitely largely related to infrastructure, and as a general rule, are not necessarily just maintenance. And what we discovered with the research in this area was that the, all of the complaints that we received were associated or related to maintenance and not necessarily drainage or flooding that isn't related to an issue outside of an infrastructure issue.
Okay, so, in that vein, Mr. Sullivan, didn't we discuss the aspect that there's a problem in this area upstairs in the CMO conference room, and talk about the drainage issue that was happening in this area, and the fact that there, as I recall, there was a plan that was addressed some time ago, that at some point, this drainage issue in that area is supposed to be addressed with street improvements, and that at some point there was one of those, and I'm going to call it a drain grate, but flume, whatever you want to describe it as, that was obscured with some street issues there, and that reduced the ability to eliminate the drainage in that area.
We did have those discussions, councilperson. I just have to rely on our computer systems and going back through the work orders that have been issued for that area. I, I, we, there are numerous situations that occur citywide that can cause ponding in an extreme rain event, that can cause things to drain or go back to normal slowly, as Mr. Streets points out, and as Mr. Minifee point out, it could be something as simple as vegetative debris that clogs a grate. I have to rely on the facts of our computer system, and if we do a search of a particular area that brings up no drainage issues as far as someone's house getting flooding, getting flooded, or a property being damaged by high water, a vehicle getting damaged by high water, the system spits out work orders and facts that I can't control. So, I'm not denying that there have been, not been issues where vegetative debris have blocked some drainage grates, there are a couple of drainage inlets there at that intersection of Kitty Hawk and Rickenbacher, there in front of the Baptist Church, there are a couple of small drain grates there, they could, I mean, that's engineering that goes back to the 40s, so, it could very well be inadequate, Ms. Eads. We just don't have any, we have no digital proof that there's been an issue.
But, once again, my point is that before we go forward with any further improvement, or approving anything else, those drainage issues are going to have to be looked at and addressed.
Correct, yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Ron, you want to finish up? And Ron, I just want to say I appreciate your decorum tonight.
Well, I appreciate you all for taking the time to listen, and, because these are important issues, they're important to the citizens. And I know because of COVID, everything is scaled way down, but I can guarantee every council member on here that the opposition in Ms. Eads' area where this apartment is proposed is no less than it was last year or this spring when it was voted on. And I've got numerous neighbors that are elderly neighbors, and every one of them, I can't necessarily say I can use the language they all used, but they oppose it and they oppose it very strongly. And I know Mr. Reed, in the spring before the vote was taken, you said that several constituents in your area called you and let you know that they were for it. I would venture to say that since a lot of the things that Mr. Johnson presented were speculation on how these things were going to rent out, who they were going to rent out to, how much he was going to rent them out for, that if the same kind of development was being proposed in every one of y'all's district, you will probably find a large number of your constituents that would oppose it there, and would probably hope that some of the other areas, the residents there, would do that as well. And so, with that, I mean, I appreciate everything you said. One quick, different note, the cleanup has gone great, that I can tell so far. The only issue that I could see as a citizen driving up and down the roads was up until just a few days ago, I saw numerous, what they called widowmakers, hanging out of trees right along the roadways, which to me, that should have been one of the first things addressed.
The trainers are working on that.
And I understand that, but we're also talking about the park, and the golf course got cleaned up, but you've got people driving down the roads in cars that a limb may not hurt them, but it could cause an accident.
They pretty well mitigated all the four lanes, Ron, and they've been working on that, and they're pretty well done with that.
Well, I understand that now, but to me, that should have been some of the first things to do for people driving up and down the road, for a safety issue. And like I say, that's just, it's not really a complaint, it's just an item, an observation, and, you know, just something that I saw. And so, I appreciate y'all, the work you do, and I just really wish that you'd consider this as far as your constituents in your area, if you'd want it there or not. I know most of the people in our area don't want it. So, with that being said, thank you, appreciate your time.
Mr. Box, would you like to address that, council?
Thank you, Your Honor. David Box, five-twenty-two Call Cord Drive, here on behalf of the applicant who is also here with us. I'll be brief. As you pointed out, Mr. Johnson did take steps to try to modify this application to be more in compliant with what he heard from the citizens the first go-around, that being the retail, the parking, you know, the height and those things. And so, as your staff report does point out, that the PUD meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance with regard to front and side yard setbacks, building height, exterior building materials, parking, and landscape slash open space. I just want to focus briefly on the 2011 original mile revitalization plan. That's one of the policies that is provided to you, the council, to weigh a zoning case in this area, and it's got some portions of it that I think are important when you are considering whether or not to vote to approve this item. Predominantly, when we think of infill development, why it's so beneficial to cities is because it is the cheapest form of development that a city can have. As you start to go further out, you start to stress infrastructure. The infrastructure in the core of a city is always going to be the most important and the easiest to develop. And so, infill development is a very important tool for any city, but when we look to that 2011 original mile plan, we look to a few things. One, in the introduction section and community perceptions of the original mile, one of the things that was said is that the neighborhood lacks enough multifamily housing. Additionally, it says the homes are obsolete and lack modern amenities. We believe this project fills both of those needs. Then moving down into the vision and goals, one of the things mentioned was create quality neighborhood that fits the 21st century lifestyle. More and more, what you're seeing is people are transient in nature and they travel, and millennials specifically don't want yards, they like to be mobile, and this project and the way that it is designed is specifically going to fill that need. The next point is that the plan asks to provide a variety of housing. That's what this is going to do. It's going to provide a different option from the traditional single-family housing that exists. Then we get to subsection G, and it talks about introduce infill housing, again, that's exactly what this is. And then finally, the point in the staff report is that the original mile residential neighborhood has not experienced significant investment in more than a half century. Well, that's exactly what we are doing with this development. We believe that we have taken the efforts necessary to address the concerns. We understand that change is sometimes hard for people, but if you look to the objective criteria that has been outlined in that plan, and what the citizens in this council deemed appropriate for that original mile, this project fits squarely within it. This is why cities have plans. Plans are in place to help city councils make decisions in the face of protests sometimes. Sometimes the right decision isn't the easiest one, and that's why you have these objective criterias through plans to help guide your decision-making process. So, it is worth noting that the planning commission did recommend approval on this item. We'd be happy to answer any questions and would ask for your approval.
Any questions, Mr. Box? Thank you, Mr. Box, for being here. Mr. Roberts, you requested to address the council?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the council's patience in allowing me to speak at a latter moment and be at my name, I do apologize for the inconvenience of that.
You know, the gentleman spoke first, I have to laugh a little bit, and, you know, he's kind of an older gentleman, and he's made reference to the fact that his older neighbors, I'm sixty-four years old.
Mr. Roberts, I'm sorry.
I'm sixty-four years old, and I didn't consider myself old at that point either.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
I will. Yes, sir. Larry Roberts, two-ten East Jacobs Drive, Midwest City, Oklahoma, seven-three-one-one-zero. Gentlemen, ladies, councilpersons, Mr. Mayor, please allow me to just as quickly as I can be brief. May I make just one quick aside as I ask the council for something, or Mr. Mayor, yours yourself? Some of the older folks that are on limited incomes such as Medicare, Medicaid, they have water bills that come due before their checks come in, and automatically, every month, they're having to pay an extra ten or twelve dollars because they don't, there's no way to facilitate any type of a plan to get around that. Is there anything in place to help these people not spend an extra twelve or fifteen dollars a month, every month?
Well, I'll have the city clerk is sitting next to me, and Mr. Roberts will check into that.
I appreciate that, and I know that many of the elder folks would have, too, because fifteen dollars is not much over the course of one month, but over the course of a year, when you're on a limited minimum income, it would help them tremendously.
I agree with you. We'll see what we can do for you, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Regrettably, we stand here at the point where it almost sounds like the vote's already been made. It says that, well, it'll go, when it goes forward, it'll have to be compliance when it goes forward. Well, the problem is, there seems to be an issue of, I won't say truth, but I will say an issue of compatibility of facts. Here we have an issue, we have, the gentleman has painted a very pretty picture that is going to be painted, put up on the wall, and he's going to leave and go look for another wall. If you look at the pictures that he's already painted in the area, those pictures are not rented, sold, they're empty. It's said that they would be in compliance with the spirit of the old quarter, the original mile. They look nothing like anything that is in the original mile. Therein with, he told me, a couple of meetings ago, he said, you know, you know, if I don't, if this doesn't go through this time, I'm just going to sell it off to another, a friend of mine that develops her single family, and I'm going to be done with it, I don't want to deal with this anymore. Well, he came back, and he made modifications. And, you know, Mr. Mayor, do you have children?
I do.
If I asked you to give your child twelve ounces of arsenic and I have them drink it, would you?
Of course not, Mr. Roberts.
Okay, then, if I take it down a notch, and ask you just to have her drink eight ounces of it, would you do that?
Of course not.
Okay, this is what's happening, you take off one story of a three-story and you then get down to two. It's still the same poison. Now, you may be making a bigger kick in on it from initial money for the taxes that are going to be there for the city at the outset, if it all gets rented out and if all plays out. But I remember I heard someone from the council say, if I had only known how this mall was going to turn out, the shopping center, I would not have voted for it. And that's when your council member said that. Now, out of courtesy, I'm not going to say who it was, but I think they know who they are and who said it. So, what I'm asking for in this instance, and I apologize for trying to breathe as I'm trying to speak, we need more to be, not the fast five dollars, we need the slower three dollars to keep the money in Midwest City, to keep the families in Midwest City. We need the opportunity for, if somebody says, I'm going to do something, I'm going to build this in the spirit of that. And look how long these houses have been being built and worked on, and they're still not complete, like on Kitty Hawk over by the football field. They're still being built, they've been built for over a year. And I understand subcontracting, you're at the mercy of your subcontractors. I've done general contracting work, but over a year for two simple double-story houses like that, that's preposterous. So, what I'm saying is it hasn't the priority that it should have. If there was a money-making proposition and not a money lost that could be made, then that would be one thing, but the people are not, we are not dollar bills. We are the citizens that put you in office and have elected, I asked you to represent us properly. So, I'm asking you, just as I look over the notes, and I'm sorry, it's Christmas time and it's a hard time, the gentleman that you shut down earlier tonight, basically with the statement, the buyer beware, maybe J-Lo Properties thought he could manipulate the vote and go ahead and bought the property or acquired the property, whatever incentives that he could get and use, but he's hurting Midwest City. We are people, we're not just a tax envelope to be stuffed in and mailed to you. We have a right to say, look, we are people, we don't have, we don't have any rights anymore, it appears. We need to have you back us, not a business. The situation, this gentleman that had one half of an apartment above his house, you said it wouldn't be proper to rezone that to, because, you know, it doesn't benefit us to rezone that for you. And it didn't, I agree with you, because what happens down the road? When you come back and you say to them, well, yeah, we did it for him, but we don't, we don't think you're worthy of it. That's not how it should be. We are the citizens that have put the money here, we're living here, our children live here, our grandchildren live here, they need a place to be. The parks that have been promised to them twenty years ago, they haven't shown up yet, and I'm just afraid with these properties, this apartment complex, it's going to take more away and not give back, just because it's tax dollars. So, what I'm asking you to consider is looking at the total of it, the number of long, length of time that it's taken to build the single houses, and it's exceeding an average, a normal build time on those, look at how long it will take to do this massive two-story apartment complex, years of inconvenience to the people that live there, loss of revenue, and that's just the dollars. I'm not, you're not even thinking about when a man says, I'm not going to do this, if I can't do it, I'm going to sell it off. Well, I believe that in, maybe it was in the Beacon, the gentleman made the same statement on record, even though somebody else already heard it and addressed the council last time we were here, I had made the statement, and he said, yes, I heard him say that to him.
Okay.
So, what I'm asking is, okay, I'm getting there, sir, but this requires a steady moment before you just automatically say, yes, rubber stamped, it's done. We need a chance. Look to the people, look to the people for once in this case, they need a chance. Ms. Eads, I appreciate you and I applaud you for what you've tried to do, and I know it's not an easy road to hoe, but please, consider the people in this one, not just the tax dollars. I've got several, five, six, seven other things I could go with, but I'm just going to ask you to do, consider it this way. You said it's not good enough to come back and take the one gentleman and say, we can't do this, we cannot rezone, because it wouldn't be right. So, you should have looked at the house better, you should have looked where you spent your money. Isn't this the exact same thing? Let the buyer beware, but take care of your people. We're going to be here, we're going to contribute continuously. This is our home, please, let it be our home and not just a parking place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Roberts, and I appreciate your decorum. Any further questions or discussions? Chair to entertain a motion on this item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Ms. Eads, I'm sorry, the city clerk would do a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Ward one. Ward two.
Yes.
Three. Four.
Yes.
Five.
Six.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, motion carries. Moving to item number twelve, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion and consideration of passing and approving the ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, City Councils, Section Two-Dash-Eleven, the time of regular meetings of council, and providing for repealer and severability in clearing an emergency.
Mr. Mayor, if I could speak to this, and this is, I'll take the hit, or whatever it is on this, for having this.
No sweat, no sweat, I wasn't thinking, as I was saying, Mr. Mayor, I'll take the hit on asking this to be brought back up before us. When, when this was, when changing the council, the number of times we were going to meet as a council came up, I was, I was against it. In fact, I went to the mayor, and I went to the city manager, and I felt like, you know, do we really need to do this? And they, they recommended that I talk to the staff, and ask them for their input on it. And I talked to several of the staff members that are intimately involved in running and preparing for city council meeting. And they assured me that the way that we were going to set up the number of times we meet was actually going to be advantageous to them, it would make their workflow better. So, when it came to us to vote, it came to us to vote on the dates with a, with a six o'clock start time. But we passed that without, we passed it, and we changed the time several of the times to six-thirty. So, I went back to the staff that I had talked to, to ask them if, okay, we did this, how is this going to affect you? And without throwing any of the people under the bus, because I really don't care to, but I can assure you that the staff that I talked to, to convince me that it was okay to do the two times and one times a month, told me that the six-thirty was going to cause them issues. And the issues were the inconsistency of the time, because instead of having it at six o'clock, no matter whether we met once or twice a month, it was going to cause issues with the consistency, and them telling the people who were bringing things toward, to us, could potentially cause problems. And the example they gave me was that somebody thinks that it's going to be heard at six-thirty, and it was actually a six o'clock meeting, that it was going to cause an issue. And then, if it did cause an issue, we could end up in litigation. So, I asked the city manager and the mayor to put this back on the docket so that we can discuss this, because, like I said, I wasn't convinced that the one and two meetings once a month, and then twice a month was actually okay, but I went to the staff and asked them, would it work? They said it would. I gave them the same courtesy as, now we've changed the time, and they're telling me it was going to cause issues. So, I came back to the city manager and the mayor and said, I felt like we owed it to the staff, we all signed up for this, we knew what time it was going to be, there needs to be some consistency and some transparency. And I think even as a result of me saying, hey, listen, I'm not really sure we did this the right way, I think that the discussion has also evolved into, they're going to try to make the other committees and other boards also meet at six o'clock, so that everybody knows, if we go to six o'clock, it's going to be six o'clock across the board, is that correct?
Yes.
Did I misstate any, if there's any staff that care to speak, if I misstated any of it, I'm not going to call you all out, but if I was wrong and misrepresented it, please say so.
I have something to say. First off, we give notice of our meetings, public meeting notice, even special meetings, emergency meetings, and there is some degree of responsibility, which I think the actions of this council tonight have touched upon, for people who have issues that come before this council, to figure out when we meet, and to bring their issues before us at that time. So, we all have some degree of adult accountability, just going to throw that out there. Now, that being said, with regard to the request for six-thirty, that was mine, so I am happy to retract that request, and that should take care of the issue.
You may not be the only one, I mean, that's, you just can't, I don't think we should arbitrarily do it.
Let me remind everybody, we did vote to pass that, and Ms. Eads, thank you for conceding on that, and really, we don't need to believe in this any longer. If there's not any further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Well, before, but before we do that, I mean, I'm not, there's, that's just two of us that have talked.
So, six-thirty works better for me most of the year, however, I get paid three hundred dollars a month, and I show up twice a month for a meeting, or some once a month. Staff, to me, what's easier on them, the more time they get to spend with their family, the less time they, I mean, if we do six-thirty, that means they get up at five, and they get to twiddle their thumbs for an hour and a half. So, well, it would make it easier for me half of the year to do six-thirty. Putting the staff first, to me, is, Susan, Susan requested six-thirty, she and I went back and forth, and we kind of came up with that idea, because for me, it worked best too. However, staff works their butts off, as you saw the forty-seven-hundred hours of overtime these folks have done, forty-nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven hours, we know that our staff works hard, long, some of them are underpaid, which I do want to address at some point. My goal is to get all of our full-time employees up to a living wage of fifteen dollars an hour, I'm just going to throw that out there. However, for this, we need to defer to what's best to the city's employees, and not what makes my life simpler.
But we also signed up for this to be two meetings a month regularly scheduled, and special meetings when needed. So, the nights that we go to one meeting are going to be longer meetings, as we've discussed, kind of like tonight, because we only had one meeting in November, and it's currently.
Eight-fifteen.
Thank you. And here we are. So, why don't we just go back to the way it was? Six o'clock, two meetings a month, that way, there's regularity.
And once again, I want to say.
And everybody can deal with it.
Thank you for conceding on that, Ms. Eads, and if there's not any further discussion, I would entertain a motion to change the time back.
So, we're not going to address the two meetings a month, we're just going to address the time?
We're going to hold to the two meetings a month, yes.
We're going to hold to the two meetings a month?
No.
No?
No, I'm going to make a motion that this stands just as it is, if that's what we're going to do, that we have the meetings on two in January, one in February, two in March, one in April, one in May, two in June, one in July, two in August, one is at September two.
That's what I mean, we're going to hold to that schedule.
Okay, at six P.M., I'm going to, just to make sure that we're on the same page here, I don't want to go back to two, nobody wants to go back to two, we've proven most months.
I do, I want to go back to two.
Okay, but we've proven most months that we don't need two meetings.
Again, we're here with this long docket, because we just had only one meeting in November, we have one meeting in December.
We don't normally have just one meeting, but I'm going to make a motion to approve this as it sits.
Next we'll do two and ones.
Two and ones and six P.M.
Lock starts. Second it.
I have a motion, and I have a second, is there any further discussion?
I'm not sure I understand, so we're saying six o'clock, right?
Six o'clock, this, this right here, that's on page two-hundred-and-forty-two.
Hold up on that, too, for just one second, there is an issue with one meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because we've already advertised the January twelfth or tenth meeting, whatever that is, the eighth or.
Twelfth and twenty-sixth is what you have for January, Billy. Twelfth and twenty-sixth is what's listed here.
Okay, I believe the first meeting in January has already been.
The first meeting in January needs to stay at six-thirty.
But.
Okay.
Because it's already been advertised.
It's already been advertised.
Okay, so, then, I make a motion that the January twelfth meeting that's posted at six-thirty stays at six-thirty, all the other meetings that are on this page, two-forty-two, start at six P.M.
I'll second it.
I have a motion, and I have a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, there is a emergency clause attached to this, and I would take a motion to pass the emergency clause.
I make a motion to pass the emergency clause.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Do we need to do a roll call on the emergency, or no?
No.
Okay.
All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries, we need to bring item number eight back from the consent agenda.
Public hearing with discussion and consideration of approving ordinance to close for public use, a twenty-one-foot fire lane easement located at eight thousand east Reno, which is a part of Block One of the Atkinson Park Edition, it's a subdivision of part the northwest quarter of Section Two, Township eleven north range two west, Indian Meridian, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma, Brandon Bundy.
Why are we closing it?
Mr. Bundy, can I explain it?
We were approached by the development.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
Yeah, sorry. Get my wits about me, I haven't talked for a while, sorry. We were approached by the owner of eight thousand east Reno about a new development that they want to do, in fact, they've applied for a building permit.
Who owns that address?
Be the seven-eleven.
Okay.
The, the fire lane easement that they, that the previous owner dedicated would conflict with their new building, so they're asking to vacate that.
But we're going to, when they come and build, we're going to make them have the fire lanes and everything like the code now says, correct?
So, we talked to the fire marshal, and I think fire lane easements were in vogue for a time here in Midwest City, there are still some around. Currently, they have different ordinances that they use to enforce the fire lanes that are not standalone easements. So, that's why you see all those red, red curbs all over the city.
So, you also.
Since we're talking about ordinances are different, is that something that we need to look at also, on the fire lane ordinances?
No, sir, this is, this is just something that they used to do, that they don't do any longer, the fire department, how they enforce the fire lane easement. I'm not familiar with how they enforce the fire lane currently, but the fire marshal assured me that it wouldn't be an issue with new buildings.
Is there any reason why we shouldn't do this?
No.
Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
I have one question, has the fire, has the fire marshal looked at this and said it's okay?
There should, there's a letter in here with the fire marshal confirming.
There's a letter in here, showing on thirty-six, page thirty-six.
Yeah, for him reviewing it. It was dedicated in eighty-one, so that's when it was in vogue.
But the fire marshal has no issue, correct?
Correct. I simply took this item through because it's related to development.
Okay. This is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience have an issue with this particular request? Seeing or hearing none, chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. We now come to our new business public discussion, does anyone have anything to bring before the council? Hearing none, the executive session listed for this is not needed, and there's further information attached to the agenda for your entertainment. Hearing no more business for the council, we are hereby adjourned, and I call the order of the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We have a consent agenda attached to this, and these items are placed on the consent agenda, so the trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all the trustees or the members of the audience, which discuss and be heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, new business public discussion, does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call the order of the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. We have several discussion items, Mr. Lyon, discussion number one.
Discussion and consideration of approving amendments to November tenth, two thousand twenty meeting as submitted.
Motion made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, item number two, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion and consideration of approving a resolution authorizing, approving a joint resolution with the Midwest City Chamber of Commerce Trust Board of the Authority amending the trust indenture of the authority to allow for grants to be awarded for the use of technology which may have expected useful life of less than twenty years.
I meant to ask this earlier, did the chamber sign off on this already, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second, discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Item number four.
Three.
Or three, I'm sorry.
Discussion and consideration of declaring lots eight through ten, Block One, re-plant of Atkinson Heights Edition, AKA twenty-five-hundred South Air Depot Boulevard surplus, and to enter into a real estate agreement with Savory Swig Stores LLC, Lehigh, Utah, to sell the property for one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand less closing costs. Mr. Coleman.
Mr. Chairman, authority trustees, you remember this vacant lot south of Slotsky's is at about twenty-five-hundred South Air Depot Boulevard, and it was created as part of the Town Center project about twenty years ago. Before that, there were three World War II-era homes that were there, and they were demolished and cleared, and we've had the lot ever since. The lot is about fourteen thousand square feet in size, just under fourteen thousand square feet in size, and there are several restrictions that limited, limit its access, limit its use, and require different architectural elements that may not be found in some of our commercial districts, so it's not an easy site to develop. In fact, you may remember earlier this year, we had a restaurateur interested in the property, but they withdrew because of access problems, and also because of the outbreak in the, of the pandemic. Savory, a Utah-based company, became interested in the property in September as the location of one of its first swig locations in Oklahoma. It looked like it worked well for them, because the proposed building's footprint is very small, and in fact, there's a, there's a diagram of the site plan in the back of your contract, and I believe it is found as Exhibit A-two. There's also an example of the elevation, the swig in Midwest City will be slightly different because of zoning regulations that affect this lot. Savory is one of the fastest-growing American restaurateurs, in fact, they have several different brands, and we feel the sale of the property is good for the authority, and having a swig in Midwest City will be good for the city. Heather and I negotiated with Savory until we felt we had this contract ironed out and in order in time for last Thursday's agenda deadline, and the contract that we had negotiated is found in your, in your packet, in the, in the electronic packet. However, this morning, we were contacted by Savory's attorneys, and they had a variety of small changes, and those changes can be found in the contract that we're asking for approval, which was a hard copy that was placed at, on your desk prior to the start of the meeting. Now, there's one modification that we didn't recommend approval of, they had asked that we change the buyer from Savory Swig Stores to the Savory Development Company, and it was posted as Savory Swig Stores, and we said we could not change this, and they said that would be fine, that they would go ahead and take title as Savory Swig Stores. So, we corrected everything, but I noticed that on page twenty-one, on the signature block, that still needs to be corrected. Now, we will, I'll be glad to answer any of your questions, and we can. Now, we will, I'll be glad to answer any of your questions, and we can go through each of the changes and review them if you like, but with the exception of the name, everything was very minor, they eliminated some sections that said that they were intentionally omitted before, and we renumbered the, the order, and other than that, it's the same as what was in your e packet. And we recommend approval, but if you have any questions, we will try to answer those.
Any questions, Mr. Coleman? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve with the correction that Mr. Coleman brought up on page 21, based on what he has told us.
That's declaring it surplus and approving the agreement as amended?
Correct.
And good job, Robert, that was a hard piece of.
It was, several of us involved in this.
Still need a motion.
Motion.
Sure, a second.
Second.
All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Item number four.
No action needed.
No action needed. We move into a new business public discussion of the agenda, does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we do have an executive session attached, Mr. Coleman, I assume that this executive session is still needed, so I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, ladies and gentlemen, we are in executive session.